Okay, I'm gonna call this meeting to order. This is a special committee of the whole meeting for purpose of budget hearings. It is Wednesday, November 20th at 10:04 a.m. Andy, would you call the roll?
Maddox.
Here.
Posh.
Russell.
Kuta.
Here.
Cobb.
Here.
Petrus.
Here.
Okay, Posh and Russell are excused. Today, we have, again, budget hearings. We're gonna hear from the police department, the fire department, the IT department, and the community relations department. We just received the materials for today. We do have an agreement with the mayor that because we're just getting these materials, you know, day by day, that we're gonna... This'll be more of kind of just an informational session. We, you know, certainly will ask questions if any of the members have them. And we're looking forward to when we make decisions in December of having the departments and directors and chiefs available if there are any additional questions after we digest some of the material. So we have Chief Britton here, and Chief, or I don't know who wants to go first, but...
Yeah, Chief Britton, Cleveland Heights Police. Like indicated, we're responsible for protecting public safety and all the residents throughout the city. Our Uniform Patrol Division provides and oversees services 24 hours a day, seven days a week. We also have a full-time jail. We have our community response team, night traffic team. We respond to residential and traffic complaints while deploying our technologies, CAD, crime mapping and so forth, and for targeted traffic enforcement. We have the crime suppression team. The crime suppression team that, through crime mapping, information, undercover work. We work with the FBI violent crime task force, the DEA, and the U.S. Marshals on a lot of our investigations. The Auxiliary Services Bureau Supervisor, the Record System Tow Unit Diversions Program, and oversees our animal control process. And then we also have our specialized units, the SWAT Edge Team, the Bomb Squad, Accident For the 2025 Police Department Budget...
For the 2025 Police Budget, they asked for $17.1 million. This includes no capital at all. So their biggest increase for, from the 2025 to the 2024 budget was their personnel services. They are asking for no additional employees, but they did show an increase because of the police union contract getting negotiated. So there is a raise in there. And then they had a very small budget increase in their other professional services.
Director Schuster, just to be accurate here, the 2025 capital request that's not in the 2025 budget, would the $730,000 for the 10 marked hybrid cars and the fingerprint computer system be in addition to the $17,159,000?
Yes, it would be.
Okay.
Sir President?
Yes, go ahead.
And for clarification on that, if we were to fund that, that would come out of the reserves, the unencumbered funds? Is that what I'm...
And fund 402, yes.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
Good morning, Chief. I have a couple of questions, and they're, in some regards, a consideration for you to think about. They're not items that are on the budget unnecessarily. And I'd like to know, are there any plans to clean up the exterior, repair, upgrade the precinct number three building to increase police presence for the neighborhoods and businesses in that area to show the city's cares?
Yeah, I think most of you met Commander Montgomery, who started back up this year, and we've had many conversations how we can utilize that building for more police presence there. So we have some ideas in mind of, you know, cleaning up the building and how we can use that as a facility for more police presence down there.
Thank you so much. Another question, has the administration considered funding for a regional animal control officer to take the burden off the police department?
Yes, Lieutenant Corrigan and some other staff, we've been doing some research. We're finding that there's only one game in town, really, that provides the services that we need. I guess that's something we could certainly look into and talk about. Lieutenant Corrigan's reached out to our surrounding suburbs who use the same animal control service. But yeah, that's something definitely we could take a look at.
Thank you, glad to hear that. Lastly, is the funding for the B-COPS in the business districts included in the 2025 budget?
Yes, like we've... Just to give you a point of reference, we're, even though we were lucky this year to hire several officers, but in that, we still met some road bumps and had another officer submit his retirement yesterday. That still leaves us with currently nine opening. Well, with that, it's... So we still now, again, have currently nine openings, so I'm in the process of now of making some... The officers that just finished the academy, they're finishing up their PTO program, so I have some moves coming up to get that night traffic and, you know, the B-COP program more...
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Sir President? Chief, I've noticed the officers in the business districts. I think that's incredible. Thank you so much. I see not just the presence, but also the traffic enforcement, the parking enforcement. That's really great. Director Schuster, if I may, so it looks like the 2025 budget is, for personnel services, is about 50% higher than the actual number from 2024. So I understand that there was the union negotiation recently, but is the rest of it explained by maybe like more overtime hours, or is there something else? Because the thing that really sticks out to me is that we have a similar number of employees. So we have just two additional team members, but the personnel budget's about 50% more from just two years ago.
And it would be because for the 2024 year, the police union that everyone voted okay the contract was an 8% increase, a 4% increase, and then a 4% COLA adjustment for that was 2024, which you would not see in the budget.
Okay.
That would have to be an amendment. So then I did the 8% there, and then I had to do the 3.5% for the 2025 year. So it's really showing 11% increase. And I would have to increase not only salary wages, but then the, all the police, Ohio Police and Fire Pension, the employee and the employer portion on that, too.
Okay, so the increase is attributed to the negotiation?
Yep.
Okay, great, thank you.
So for the 10 vehicles, how... Sorry about that. For the 10 vehicles, how critical is that need?
And could I, just to add to that question, what, how old are the vehicles they're replacing?
I can speak to that if you might, if you may. Just doing a quick...
By the way, this is Lieutenant Corrigan.
Lieutenant Corrigan, Cleveland Heights. So in looking at a rundown and also working with our sustainability person in city, it's paramount that we get these Crown Vics off the road. They are terrible for our environment, and they are... The newest one is 2011, so 2008 to 2011. We have 26 of those that are still actively out on the road. We had more than that, but five were downed in 2023 because of rotted frames. With the mayor's initiative to try to get hybrids, which is a smart idea for the city, we are now trying to transition into getting more of those hybrids into our fleet. We still have six Chargers that are 2013 years, and also, we downed 11 Chargers since December of 2022 for rotted frames. So of the 35 active cars that are going nonstop, which is not ideal for sustainability of those vehicles, we have 35 of those. 10 of those will be approaching 10 years old in 2025, and 15 of those, 35, are four years or older. And the sustainability person is telling us that we should be trying to rotate these out every five years instead of having these large ass for you. And then in five years, we have to replace a tremendous amount. So buying five to 10 a year, we get our fleet up to where it should be then, it should reduce the costs in the long run. If we have some kind of five-year plan, I think is what we're trying to get with Andy, who is doing the sustainability stuff. So that's pretty much what we're trying to do. We're trying to get some of those Crown Vics out and replace them with hybrids.
Mr. President, I'm sorry. Just to add to that, I had that question just a couple of years ago because I knew we still had several Crown Vics on the road, and nowhere near as safe either as some of those newer vehicles for officers, from what I'm understanding. Even across the country, I've heard there's some issues with gas tanks and sometimes in terms of impact. And so I'm happy to hear that. But I did also... Could you add a little bit more color, too? Because I know it's not just the age of these vehicles, it's also the mileage on them. And so we really can't look at them the way a consumer vehicle is. It's more of the mileage than just the age on top of that. And I know many of these are running pretty high as well. And so I wanted to make sure that the general public who's listening also understands that it's just not just about the age. These vehicles are running constantly. It's also about the amount of mileage on these vehicles in terms of that maintenance and that higher mileage as well.
Correct, and you're throwing good money at poor vehicles at some point, and it's overwhelming our service department with repairs on cars that are approaching 15 years old, which doesn't make a lot of sense. So we appreciate everything you give us, and, you know, we have been very prudent with the vehicles that we've gotten, and we've been taking care of them. We're just at the point where we need to get on a regular cycle. Currently, there's five hybrids available for sale right now. We asked for 15 last time. We sort of backed off to 10 because we wanted to allow other projects to get funded. With that being said, those vehicles are still available at that price that we had locked in, that $47,500. Those would be available immediately, and then we could order five more at the start of the year if that's something that, you know, the mayor is amenable to. So then we wouldn't have to order all 10. We could do five and five if that's possible, but I don't know the budgetary constraints on that. But I think once we get this next big push, we should be in a good position to start rolling these over. We're not having to buy 10 every year. Three to five every year is what we did in the past, pre-COVID, which was a lot more palatable to the financial aspect of it. Because these cars are getting very, very expensive. Also, the hybrids, they take a long time to produce. If we were to order cars in January, they would not be road-ready till August. So that's best-case scenario. Cars that you were gracious enough to give us for the last time, those are still not on the road yet. So that shows you the lead time and the planning that's needed for these.
Is it the outfitting of the car or the actual...
So it was before, it was Ford. They were having shortages on certain computer parts. The hybrid line is only up for, they said, a couple weeks a year for that model year built. So we were able to get our order in. They built the vehicles, and then there was some waiting on some of the cages because it was a new model year, so the cage that goes in between. So if we order everything, sometimes those cages take a couple months, two to three months to get in, the Satina cage.
Mr. President, just to add to that as well, I know this is odd knowledge to know, but they're so popular and they're so behind in terms of the production that they're no longer offering them to regular customers now. They're only offering that hybrid model to the police department to try to get them up because they're such a popular model. And so what he's saying is absolutely accurate. It is very difficult for many municipalities across the country to get those right now just because of that. So they pulled them off of the regular consumer market to try to help ease that burden.
Do you want to follow?
Yeah, I had a few more questions.
Go ahead.
Director Schuster, from the unfilled but budgeted positions in the police department, do you know approximately how much money we will come under the yearly budget because of that?
No, but I can let you know.
Okay, and do...
Just so I'm clear on what your question is and what her answer was, did we budget last year in the 2024 budget as if we were gonna be fully staffed?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So that answers...
So to the extent that we had some unfilled positions, which, if I'm understanding correctly, we did, we should have some excess in your department budget.
Yes, not as much as you would think because we did have that 8% increase from the union contract and then the healthcare cost.
To clarify that, that, yeah, that was retroactive to April.
Yeah.
And I guess this is also a question for the mayor. So assuming that council is inclined, is there any reason why we can't proceed with purchasing five of these hybrid vehicles right now if they're available?
In terms of, like, put in the order this year and have it be under 2024 budget, is what you mean?
If I understood correctly, we could do that, and then we would only need five vehicles for next year.
I would be absolutely overjoyed with that.
Okay. I think that's probably what council would like to do. And then if you could share some details on this fingerprint computer system, is that something that goes out in the cars with the officers, or would this be here at the station?
I just want clarification so I know how to do it with the budget. If you're gonna do the five cars in 2024, then you will see a budget adjustment, an increase for 2024, and then I'm gonna decrease this ask, and you're good with putting this in the 2025 budget.
Yes, for five vehicles.
The five and five.
I'm hearing Counselor Cobb say that perhaps we can use any unencumbered funds throughout the budget in 2024 for buying those cars. Is that...
For five of them, and I would do that.
Yeah, so, yeah.
Do the budget adjustment for 2024 to add the five in, but I'm just saying for 2025, we did not budget all the capital. And if you guys are good with me budgeting the 2025 five cars, I just wanted clarification on that.
I think we do want to do that.
Okay.
Thank you, counsel.
Yeah, sure. Fingerprint scan, sorry. What happened, what happened, I was a couple weeks ago when I got an email notice from the county that, it's called the Automated Fingerprint Identification System Computer, and it's probably the size of this table, and it's down in the jail with the stand and the computer and the screen, the scanner portion. Well, they sent us an email saying that that computer system is now outdated, they're not updating it. If you want to still be part of the AFIS fingerprint program, which we're only, probably the only one, we're connected to what's called, we have our fingerprint union, but the whole computer system's connected where we can run our own fingerprints. But yeah, to stay within the system with the county and the state, we would need to update that computer. But she said by the end of 2025, that computer system, all the hardware is outdated and they're not updating it, and they're basically told us, oh, you have to get a new one.
Sounds like that's a necessary piece of equipment.
Yes, sir.
Do you know if there are any grants that are out there, if we apply for any that might help pay for that?
So I did look into that, and the only grants available would be through the medical examiner's office, and they are actually, we're under their umbrella. So we could buy under them, under the council of government, so we wouldn't have to bid, and we could use their preferred vendor, who they are preferring we use because they're sort of in charge of that system. It's, I forget, I think it was called the Coverdale Grant, and we would not qualify because we are a police department. And I think that they have filed for that grant for other types of things, getting like cold case backups. So they had other priorities, but they said that they would extend the pricing that they're getting on that, and they were happy that we were using the same vendor because we have a lot of input into that system, and that system's very valuable throughout the state of Ohio, and they're trying to keep people on the same machine. So garbage in, garbage out, as they say. We're entering in a lot of good fingerprint data with our fingerprint unit. So it's one of those things where we didn't anticipate it, but that machine is over 13 years old, and it's come to its end of life, so...
Are you gonna follow up on this?
No, I was gonna follow up on something else.
Okay, because I want to follow up on that question, but go ahead.
All right, and are there any other capital needs that you would like council to consider that aren't in here? So we have the hybrid vehicles, and we have the fingerprint computer system.
Yeah, the only request is if you would consider, I was talking with Director Schuster, for the money for the locker room project we're still working on. We're hoping that we could request that money that was already set for this year be transferred to the 2025 budget so we can continue on, hopefully getting that project done this year, 2025.
I was under the impression we'd already done the locker room, but we're not...
That has proven to be a more complicated project than we initially assessed. And I think we sorted out the issues with the ARPA funding, but there were still some bidding problems that we had to deal with. I think we're working through that now, though.
Does it need additional money, or you just simply need us to allocate the same amount?
Yeah, it should be, should be. I don't believe that it should change the cost, I would imagine.
I think there was gonna be some increase if we were gonna be using Panzika or some other similar general contractor. There would be some cost associated with that. Also, we're trying to spread it between a couple different departments, the building, because it is a building issue. So I don't know how that was gonna spread out on their budget. I think we were working through a spreadsheet initially, but until we engaged the correct bidding process and got a general contractor, we didn't really want to speculate on the amount. My rough estimate, it was about $70,000 more, but that was gonna be hopefully covered by the building because it is a building project. So our initial ask, I think, is pretty close to correct. Now, again, we're going on a year. That was in November, so I'm still hoping that all those quotes are accurate from those contractors that we were anticipating engaging.
Though the director just indicated to me, it might be a better idea to just simplify it and not, you know, put it in multiple lines and just have it in the police capital budget, just for operational efficiencies, yeah.
That would, that would make sense. So then, yes, there would be additional monies needed to complete that project. There was some HVAC, and there was also some electrical work that needed to be done.
Probably the consensus is that we're gonna want to have that taken care of, however, we need to do it with the budget, I think.
We already created it last year, so we went...
Thanks.
It sounds like the HVAC system, is there anything the APARTA will be updating in terms of their efficiencies in this building?
It's a possibility, but I think the HVAC system that we're talking about is specific to the ventilation of that space, just to avoid the same mold issues that we experienced several years ago when this first came to the fore.
Yeah. President Kuta, I just have one more question.
Yeah, please.
Does the $680,000 for the 10 new vehicles include the outfitting, so comms and the computer system, et cetera?
Correct, it does.
All right, thank you.
Director Schuster, it seems like we are all amenable to these capital requests. Is there a reason why it's not in the budget? Is it just that it would exceed the revenues that we're bringing in?
No, there's a lot of moving parts with this budget, and with all the ARPA stuff going on and projects not being completed in 2024 because of the time constraints, as we were trying to get a good handle on what was gonna get done and what wasn't. So a lot of the capital I did not budget for.
We wanted to maybe have at least a brief conversation with council about what things might be included and what might not be based on sort of the strain of other projects. The purchases are a little bit less of a concern than some of the other potential capital projects that we might go through, but we wanted to have that quick conversation with council before sort of officially proposing that these are the capital expenditures that we would include. And I appreciate that conversation, especially landing on sort of separating out this particular purchase, the five and five, and including that in this year, and then a more gradual next year expenditure. So I appreciate the conversation that we're having.
Mr. President, I just want to acknowledge, I know you said that yesterday to us about the capital campaign and those things coming back, but that was something that was addressed at the top of the budget hearings yesterday, that they will come back to us about all those capital improvement projects at a later date. That was shared, yeah, so thank you for that.
So back to the fingerprint live scan. So there's nothing that you've heard of that's like artificial intelligence technology coming down the pike that would make this, you know, antiquated in the near future? I mean, it's not like I know a lot about it or anything, but facial recognition, just there's just, I don't know, it just seems to be so many things out there, but nothing that replaces fingerprinting.
It's a live scan, so it's a plate, clear plate, almost like glass.
Right.
Remember the old ink-rolling? Now that's a little sophisticated, where it's digital on a plate, and that's the machine that all the agencies are using. We're lucky enough to have our own print unit, fingerprint unit. So it's beneficial that we're entering all that good information into the system that is helpful for all the Northeast Ohio law enforcement agencies.
Yeah, this is, this is one of those technologies that the information is shared, which means that, you know, if we put in good information at the time of arrest, that information will be used by law enforcement agencies throughout the region. And obviously, we benefit from that when other communities have the same technology and approach as well. But we want to make sure that we're maximizing on the maximum information for law enforcement agencies when it comes to identifying people.
Mr. President?
Yeah.
Just a quick question. We allow... It's a service that we...
Yes, sir, that's separate, yeah, that we, we just updated the computer on that, and that goes through the Detective Bureau, that's a separate program that goes through the Ohio Attorney General's Office, I believe, and the FBI, and...
So one of your goals is improving upon data collection, resource deployment, using speed sign data and citizen input for traffic calming. So how would you go about giving citizen input for this? Or how do you plan on it, I guess?
Well, one of the main things I use for that information is, the main one is citizen concerns that are forward to my office. The other part we use, you know, we research our CAD data systems for, you know, accident locations. That way, we look at, you know, where to best, you know, to increase patrol presence for traffic safety. That's the main one, are on the same lines of crime, crime mapping.
Um, that, that's the main one, our, um, on the same lines of, of crime, crime mapping. Um, the good old saying in, in police work is you attend to the small problems where, you know, for, for example, we're having, you know, auto thefts or theft from autos or, you know, B and E's. So we know, you know, to send more patrol to, to be visible, you know, for, for traffic enforcement, which, um, you know, brought up under Chief Lanza's, you know, I realize how the importance of that is, how that deters crime as well.
And further information collection, just for everybody's edification and please let people know, we also on the Access Cleveland Heights app, we've added certain categories of complaint and concern. And one of them is traffic safety concern. That is, if you put that in, in the app, it's forwarded to police for addition into that information gathering as well.
But Chief, sometimes, um, I, I have heard that sometimes the Meet the Police, they're not well attended. Is there anything counsel can do to help, uh, make that happen more, you know, in a better way?
Um, yeah, no, um, I think we're, you know, working with, with the mayor and, and my staff coming up with um, you know, options and strategies to reduce traffic accidents and, and speed enforcement is, you know, uh, working together, come up with all those plans and programs. But, um, you know, just here having, the mayor indicated, we're having these conversations. So, you know, we can share our same goals and objectives and how we can do that together is the bit, the, you know, most important to me.
Well, I'm, I'm more. Very, very happy for counsel to advertise the Meet the Police. When you talk to people, when they have concerns about uh, safety and security in the city, um, please let them know that we, we do have these regular uh, Meet the Police sessions where they can provide that information directly to uh, the division as well. Please let everybody you can know.
I mean, I, I know that you go to, and, you know, certainly we could do that. I know you go to block parties and those, those kind of things. And maybe I was thinking, you know, if there are any events uh, that involve counsel, either individuals or, you know, collective, maybe we could um, let you know. And then if, if, if you wanted to be present, I mean, if this was something that, I, I'm just trying to figure out, you know, if, if, if the, if the actual Meet the Police events are not that well attended, you know, in other words, them going to a specific police event, maybe we need to maybe look at more hybrid kind of, you know, events that are already happening, where people are going to be there and, you know, maybe it's not as efficient to have specifically, and I'm not, I'm not, I mean, you know, do what, what you think is best, but um, certainly I know that you want them, these to be productive and engaging for the community. Um, but perhaps, you know, when we combine events, then maybe that's the better way to go.
I'll tell you, I, I, I think it's, it's crucial that we maintain sort of the, the regular opportunity for people to come in even on a small scale to express those things. So we want to keep that Meet the Police. But I think uh, police are generally very happy to participate in other events. Um, you know, as, I, I don't want to speak for like deployment and, and, you know, those sorts of needs, but um, beyond that, I, I think police are generally um, you know, willing to engage with the public in a variety of ways. I know that we have um, a bunch of different events that, that police already does, the, the charity work and, and, and those sorts of things um, that, that are ongoing. But if there are other opportunities, I think we'd be very happy to, to look into those. Any other, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, um, we don't have the resources to have an officer in every city lot at all hours of every day, but I think that cameras could be um, important deterrent. And so um, I suspect that tenants are disproportionately affected by car break-ins. And so I wanted to see your thoughts on potentially starting to fund the installation of cameras in our city lots.
Well, I, I wouldn't want to get in front of the, the chief or the, or the division on this, but um, from my perspective, uh, I know when we started the, the camera system upgrade and, and expansion, um, our primary concern was making sure that within the business districts, uh, we had reliable, a reliable system that we could count on. Um, the expansion primarily dealt with uh, our park system because of the, the dangers that can occur um, in, in those situations sometimes and examples of which we've seen uh, in, in parks. Um, we wanted to make sure people were safe in our parks. Uh, I do not, we, we, I don't think we've discussed to a great degree the expansion into parking lots, but I think that that's a good idea. Um, assuming that we can, you know, fund it is, is really the most important piece. But the, the lots have generally access to um, electricity, which the cameras would require. Um, and uh, we could run the fiber into our lots as well. Uh, so I don't think that it would be overly burdensome to add those, but we are not yet done with the, this, the camera expansion project um, yet. And some of that is just contractual issues with uh, some of the placements for, for some of the camera locations. Um, but I, I don't know i- if Chief has more to say about the, the utility of that. I, just offhand as a layperson, I think there's a great deal of utility in expanding it that way.
Yeah, like, like the mayor said, well, I, I don't want to give out all my police secrets, but back to uh, Councilman Petra said, you know, we were aware, we, we, uh, Cleveland University Circle, um, we experienced a, a rash of vehicle break-ins. Um, I had people out there um, watching um, for that. Um, we, we've made some identifications and some potential suspects. So it's, we're working, our bureau's working with, with Cleveland and University Circle to identify those persons. Haven't, it seems to have quelled uh, for the time being, but um, that's definitely something, I guess, looking forward. Talking with the mayor and IT to, to do that for camera system in the lots. But, you know, it's part of the, the night, nighttime divisions are to patrol the parking lots and that's kind of goes hand in hand with the overnight enforcement of the parking. Serves a little purpose to, you know, make sure people are following the parking uh, ordinances and out looking for people uh, looking to break into cars.
Mr. President?
Yeah.
I could, um, so it's just not possible for someone to be there at all hours. And so um, I think that it would probably be too big of an expense for us to fund in one year, but am I hearing that you would be open to us maybe starting installations? Starting a process where we, you know, maybe over five years fund the installation across the city lots?
I'm always open for, for more, more cameras and resources to help, you know, in our public safety goals.
I will say, from, from a practical perspective, I don't think it would make sense yet for us to fund an expansion into those lots in the 2025 budget, considering how the process that we're going through for the expansion of the existing project. Um, you know, we're, we're sort of all contracted out in terms of the installation for that. Um, but we are not complete on the installation. And some of the, the contracting work with First Energy, for instance, is, is taking a great deal of time. Um, so I, I, I don't want us to budget for something that we're not going to be able to complete next year. And I don't believe that we'd be able to um, add that in an operational sense next year. And, and we probably have to talk with um, Director Prosser about this just to get some more clarification about that and the timeframe that would be necessary. I think it's a good idea. I don't know that it makes sense to, to budget for that expansion uh, in 2025 specifically.
So just to clarify, I'm hearing that the team is really busy. The city staff is really busy right now with the current installations. So it just seems infeasible, impractical to think that we'd be able to do the city lots this coming year, but maybe in the future, whenever.
If, if, if Director Prosser has a different assessment of that, I am absolutely willing to move forward.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions, comments? Okay, Chief, Lieutenant, oh, go ahead.
I think some of the easier things that we do that aren't really cost prohibitive are lighting, to make sure that all the lighting is working in those lots. Because if you have a camera there, what are you going to see? Someone with the hoodie, a dark figure? So even though you have cameras, that doesn't mean that we're going to be able to stop uh, that activity. So broken glass theory, let's cut bushes down, let's get proper lighting, let's get the lots striped correctly. Um, and in doing that, then also with not giving up what our operational strategies are right now, um, it will come in waves and we will be able to stop that.
Mr. President?
Yeah.
I did want to say something to, to you while I was here. And I mentioned this to the mayor maybe a month or so ago, uh, but shout out to the, to Police Department and the partnership with the City of East Cleveland. I pastor a church right there on Euclid Avenue and the presence is strong. You can see it from Noble, Taylor and Lee Road. Um, just, just the amount of security in that partnership that's coming up there. It's, it's made a huge, huge difference on the other side of the border as well. And I can tell you that residents there, uh, even many of my members are absolutely noticing that partnership and that presence as well. And so I just wanted to appreciate that. There, there isn't a time that I'm headed to the church in the morning and I'm not seeing that partnership. Um, so things are absolutely happening and moving and people are definitely noticing even um, in East Cleveland. So thank you guys so much for the work that you're doing.
All right. Uh, thank you, Chief Britton, Lieutenant Corrigan, appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, next up, Chief Harry.
Thank you.
We appreciate that. All right. So Chief, would you like to make some kind of opening or introductory remarks?
I'm sorry, some.
I said, would you like to make some kind of opening or introductory remarks?
Uh, well, thank you to everybody for um, working on this. This is like, as you said earlier with the places, there's been a lot of moving parts in this process. This is an abnormal year. And uh, they're doing the best that they could do with what's been thrown at us.
The fire department is requesting for their 2025 budget, $15 million. The personal services is 13.9, which includes the union's new contract, six firefighters and one fire inspector increase. The other operating, other than operating personal services, increased very little this year and you'll see a big decrease in the capital. The 257,000 includes the 198 lease payment for the new aerial fire truck.
I know we spoke a bit about this yesterday, but I, I did want to invite uh, the chief to provide a little bit more information about um, how this personnel increase um, addresses some need related to the decrease in the work week that we contracted uh, with uh, the union on and the additional concerns about the ongoing constant increase in run volume. Uh, so I just wanted to provide the chief uh, an opportunity to give a little bit more information about that.
So yeah, I had listened in on what you'd mentioned yesterday about that. Um, that was 100% accurate. The run volumes have gone up significantly and in my career. Um, Assistant Chief Brewer's been here 31 years, he can attest. Uh, we've only seen the run volume stay or decrease twice in my career, 21 years full. Uh, and those two years, it really was just a blip, you know, uh, down 100 runs. It's not like they incrementally increase. We've gone from 4,300 runs 20-ish years ago to over 8,000 runs. So more than 100% increase in two decades. Uh, it shows in the workforce. The increase in personnel is badly needed. Um, the six personnel for staffing and the one in fire prevention will do a lot of help. Uh, and I'll speak for Inspector Strebb, he's burned out. He really needs that assistance and, and, and also that will decrease the overtime that he's kind of mandated to fill.
Director Schuster, I just want to make sure, uh, on the, um, I think that's uh, next to the 225 budget, that's 224, right? Even though it says, okay, 2024. And um, hmm, everything, oh, and then so there's 257,791 dollars in the capital budget for this year. And then you have listed these requests that are additional to that, correct?
Correct. So the 250, what is it, 257,000 on this 2025 capital request includes one through four.
Okay, that helps.
And then five is a new one that was not part of the 2024 budget.
Yeah.
And then six through eight is part of the 2024 budget that is not going to get done this year and they're asking to do it in the 2025 year. So I would reduce the budget in 2024 and transfer it to the 2025 budget.
Okay, so, oh, okay, six through eight were budgeted.
In 2024.
Got it, okay, yeah, I see that now, okay. Yeah.
Just a couple of questions about the, uh, the, the lines, uh, and I, I, oh, there he is. Uh, capital request number three. I'm just curious about that one because I want to know, i- is that really um, your bottom ask? Do you need more of these? I, I'm just curious, when I saw one, I was just curious about, about the need for that one specifically.
We have a replacement plan. As things get used and age, we'll, you know, bring in a newer model and turn that frontline model into a, a backup piece of equipment. There is a brand new design that the company that makes the monitor defibrillator, defibrillators came out with. We're kind of in a holding pattern, waiting on that. It's brand new technology, uh, so hopefully we're going to, we're going to get one and then see where it goes from there. We, it's, we don't like to buy things that are the first run of anything, just like a vehicle. As Battalion Chief Mezer will tell you, you never want to buy the first edition of any vehicle or the first year of a model. It, it's kind of that thing. But we do have, we do have, you know, one that we need to change out.
Okay, awesome, I, I just wanted to make sure, please feel free to come back to us once you get it and receive it and you, you, you're sensing that there's something else that you need. Um, my other question was about line four. Um, I, I, I know last year we spoke about uh, the, the engines and the, uh, the vehicles, the fleet in general. Is, uh, is there any other need that you're seeing that? Is this just in the schedule or is this, is this an emergent need? I just want to make sure that you guys have what you need. And so, um, I know we talked about possibly that, is that an F2 or F350? Uh, that's the line number seven. I just want to make sure in terms of your fleet that you guys are healthy as well.
So line number seven in particular, I'll, I'll walk through the, the vehicle needs for you. But line number seven in particular, we originally had it in the schedule to replace the Incident Command Vehicle 253 in 2026. It's a good vehicle. We had a really critical need to replace the utility truck slash plow. That does a lot, including when the squads go out in a blizzard. A lot of times Battalion Chief Measures will jump in that thing and plow the street for them to get to the house and, you know, in and out of the driveway to get somebody to the hospital. That thing really shouldn't even be on the road. We altered our course after a bunch of meetings about it. We're just going to use that pickup truck for the Incident Command Vehicle. Take the Incident Command Vehicle, make that the utility slash plow truck.
Got it. That's what I was asking about. Because I'm like, I didn't know what that truck was called, but I knew that that plow truck looked mighty interesting, so.
I remember you asking about it last process.
I just want to make sure that you guys-
We're pretty confident we can get that done this year. It's just, we had to find the right, it can't be an F-150 or F-250. It just needs to be able to handle the plow and the equipment.
And you're good to go with your vehicle? Because I know we asked about that last year as well. And I know that that's something that was needed quite some time, so.
Really, what the plan is with the chief's vehicle is to rotate the current one into the station vehicle duty. The station vehicles are getting into pretty bad shape. The mayor had mentioned the other day, when I sent one down to, to the final concert, that, you know, they're starting to get in, in bad shape, so we toss one on there. If you have extra capital, I do have a wish list. As far as the aerial truck, that we already received. So, that just kind of lives in the budget. The new engine will replace our aging 2012 Rosenbauer. And we'll be pretty good on our emergency vehicles as soon as we get our ambulances into work.
Okay, awesome. Thank you. I just, I'm obsessed with your feet specifically because as I'm driving through the city, I just noticed that you guys, sometimes they're hanging on a dear life sum of your equipment. And I work on what you have, but I'm happy to see these.
It's a slow, it's arduous process to replace these things. We're at the mercy of the manufacturers. They take a long time and it's happening.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
And just to add a little bit to what the chief just said about the timeframe. It's grown, over the last couple of years, it's grown immensely worse in terms of, you know, when we order and how long it takes to get some of these things in, in hand. Maybe, maybe it'll turn around at some point. But, you know, everybody is very familiar with the supply chain issues that everybody was having.
And the workforce.
Yeah. And so, a lot of, a lot of places are playing catch-up right now because of how long it took to get things, you know, that were budgeted, but we couldn't actually take possession of them because of how long it took to get the things made. So, I just wanted to, to mention that.
Go ahead, Councilwoman.
Morning, Chief.
Morning.
I'm concerned about in the 2025 capital request for the updating of the kitchens. I'm going to say plural. It was my understanding that the $50,000 last year was not adequate to do what needed to be done in those kitchens. And our firefighters live there during their whole shift. They eat and breathe and whatever. They meet in those rooms. And I'd like to make sure that those are finally brought up to what they need to be. So, I'd like to ask for an additional $75,000 to add to that $50,000 to double what, you know, for two kitchens and any contingencies that may arise.
We'll take it.
Thank you. Also, the Leopardo project, they're talking about kitchen makeup air units and adding a split system. I have no idea what that is necessarily, but can that be coordinated with any updates on the kitchens?
It can and it should be. I had asked Tom Fadanza from Parks and Properties if, if we could put in a mini-split system. And really what that is, is because when the stations were built, you know, they were built for a certain HVAC system and size. And as things were added on and those HVAC systems aged, they're, they're kind of underserving the buildings. A mini-split would just go in the wall in the kitchen and it could heat and cool the kitchen and day room area and not have to tap into the rest of the HVAC systems. They're a reasonable, a reasonable price and not terribly difficult to install. He did hope to put that in the plan.
Yeah. I'm thinking that that would be great if it could be coordinated and worked on relatively soon in the year since they've been waiting so long.
The, so the Leopardo work will begin. And our expectation is that, you know, that work will address some of the envelope of the building as well, which is required to protect any of the investment that we place in the building. So, I think we'll have to coordinate those things. The priority is things like the roof and making sure that we're not having leaks that are contributing to mold spores again in, you know, places where people are, are living, frankly. So, yeah, we'll be, we'll be coordinating all of that work with Leopardo.
Thank you very much.
Is it possible we could get, you know, some kind of estimate as to the work? I mean, I appreciate Councilwoman coming up with a figure, but I mean, I think the better thing to do would be that if we had an estimate of what, you know, you seem to know what needs to be done and $50,000 being, you know, obviously inadequate, it would be good to know what that, you know.
We did have one company come in and, in speaking with Tom Fadanza about this. I'm, you know, at the time, I didn't have the authorization to do any of this stuff, you know. He had a company come in and give an estimate. The estimate seemed way over what it needed to be because it addressed things that really were excessive and, you know, not needed. And then some of the other things weren't even addressed in the thing. He did mention he has two companies he's looking at. They both need to provide estimates. And apparently, part of the process is they have to have a mock-up done as well. So, we're at the mercy of contractors now. It's just a matter of when can somebody come in, give us the mock-up and the estimates.
Mayor, that consortium that we often use for estimates and competition, is that available for something like this?
Which consortium are you referring to?
I forget what it's called, but it's used for a lot of our procurements.
You're talking about like a Sourcewell or?
No. That doesn't ring a bell, but, yeah. But that's just for capital? That's not for services?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think that that would be for sort of the professional services that we're talking about. Part of the dilemma as well, well, getting the estimate and getting the designs and how much the estimate relies on the designs being substantially complete is also a problematic situation. But we can potentially just set aside some of this, the funding, to complete designs independently. And then we would need to use those designs to bid out the work is a possibility. But I don't, I don't know that that's the direction that we would want to go. We could do a design build process for these as well, but then that would- We can, we can, we can make this work one way or another. But I think the, the additional funding for capital, obviously, it provides a limit, but is not, you know, our, necessarily our expected spend either. If we wanted to put more into that project just to provide some headroom, I'm, I'm open to that. I don't have a problem with that myself. Director Schuster, I don't know what your thoughts are on that.
But what we do know is the $50,000 is inadequate, correct?
Agreed.
Okay.
It did give us one, a draw up of, a breakdown of materials and labor. And I believe it was $66,000-ish thousand for one kitchen, as I said before. It, it seemed excessive. I mean, I think it had $6,000 just for tear out of old things. It's like, then that, that doesn't need to be-
That's something we could do in-house.
Yeah, yeah. We have, you know, we can even have some of the crews help with that stuff. We've done that before. So, I would imagine $125,000 will go a long way.
Go ahead.
Chief, it was really interesting to hear about the increase in run volume. Do you attribute that to like the age of the structures in our city or anything different?
We're, we're unique as a city. I suppose all cities are. You can't really attribute it to any one thing. Usually, as I see in other cities and speaking with other chiefs and departments and EMS coordinators and such, aging population. Severe increase in what I had been, what I had heard has been called illnesses of despair. Psychiatric illnesses, drug and alcohol abuse, violence, those things. Probably the thing that sticks out most to me is people that have become dependent on the emergency system as their primary healthcare provider. The, the emergency rooms have seen this increase coinciding with ours. You know, it's very uncommon to go to an emergency room and not see a triage room and waiting area full of people. As the mayor had mentioned yesterday, people starting to utilize urgent care centers, I think that's a really good idea. I myself has, have started using urgent care centers for myself and my family. They're quick, they're reasonably priced. I found the doctor that I've used at the one that I go to to be fantastic. I don't know, you know, I suppose we're going to have to see how this plays out. We can only address it, you know, as it happens. And right now, the thing that we need is, is staffing to deal with what, what was taking place over the last 20 years.
And I'll say, the dilemma, you know, when, when fire EMS gets called, they go. And, you know, if they show up and it's not a true emergency, well, they still made the run. And that takes time and it takes time away from, you know, other, other things that they may have to do. And they get back to the station after a run that turns out to not be an actual emergency. They might have to turn right back around and get to another call. And that's what I was talking about yesterday when it comes to the run volume increase leading to, you know, higher incidence of burnout, higher incidence of illness and injury. It just stresses a system that isn't necessarily perfectly prepared for that dramatic increase over time. And we haven't, we haven't adjusted to that increase in a gradual sense. So, we're, we're going to need to start that process.
And we have seen a corresponding spike in illness and injury in the last two, three years. We, we had a record eight people injured at one single time this year. That's unheard of in our history of our department.
Wow. I mean, I'm wondering if some type of public information campaign might not make a dent in it. Maybe not, but, I mean, we do have a mental health facility now at Severance here and we do have urgent care at Cedar Fairmount. I mean, you know, I don't know how many people would call them instead of calling you. I mean, but it would be, I think, I'm assuming some of these people are multiple customers.
Yes.
You know, just repeat over and over, rinse and repeat, right? So, I don't know. Maybe that could be part of the-
Yes, that's a good idea. I think it's important for people to understand what are and aren't emergencies. Not that we won't come help or come assist in decision-making. I think there's going to be some effect by the first call program that'll address the mental health crisis that I think every city in the country is seeing over the last few years. Getting that second fire prevention personnel will help too. You know, we could, we could do more community outreach.
That is one of the, one of the ideas around this fire prevention personnel is education. Of course, the, the focus is on making sure that your homes are more fire-safe, that you're operating in a way that doesn't increase the danger of fires and, and those sorts of things. And, you know, providing and maybe installing the, you know, detectors for various issues, the carbon monoxide detectors and the fire detectors and such.
Also get involved in, in more community education, you know, teaching elderly residents, you know, how to avoid trip hazards, maybe helping them install or safety-proof their home and install grab bars at their showers or, you know, those are all things that really could make an improvement.
In collaboration with our Office on Aging, maybe we can reach out into that community and sort of stem some of that, you know, not inappropriate necessarily, but maybe excessive use of the emergency system.
Go ahead.
Thank you for that. Shout out, by the way, that urgent care on Cedar. I use it. It's just, it's so quick and easy when the kids have something, we're in and out. I'm not, I'm not going over there standing in a line in a emergency room all night. It's great. So, so anything that I can do, you just told me. I really need to start promoting those more across the city, really educate those because they're, they're close, they're easy to get to. And a lot of these things could be knocked out while you guys aren't having to go on these runs. The runs is the reason I, I had a question for you guys. I know that you, you guys are amazing in terms of mutual aid and partnership with other cities. Same thing I told the police chief. There's not a time that I roll through East Cleveland as a pastor that I do not see you guys down there too, helping and supporting. Is that putting any pressure on? Is there anything that we can do from an equipment standpoint that would make that support from a regional standpoint easier for you guys? And then my second part of that is, is there anything regionally that you're seeing from an equipment standpoint that would, would help that you're saying that maybe we don't utilize from that, that case as well?
That's a really good question. We do have fantastic mutual aid agreements with all our surrounding cities. We're very helpful to them, they're very helpful to us. I think most anybody in the industry would tell you that putting a lot of help on scene is safe and efficient. You can always stage people. You don't necessarily have to dedicate somebody to a thing right away. And in that, there is safety. Equipment-wise, I can't think of anything off of the top of my head. We do have a special rescue team that is comprised of us and our mutual aid partners and, you know, other cities in the area. It's actually grown in the last few years. And, and our team goes all the way out to Euclid, yeah? Yeah. And each city dedicates, you know, a handful of personnel, you know, a couple or three per day, per shift. Could we think of any needs for that? Yes, so interestingly, that's a good point. East Cleveland has been, in the past, and not to throw any blame at anybody, I understand their situation. In the past, they've been observers in those things. And in speaking with their current chief, Dave Worley, who's a fantastic guy, he's really, he really wants to bring them into everything. And he, you know, we had a good, long, productive meeting with him. You know, he wants to be involved in the special rescue team and all the other things that come along with it. In the past, it's kind of, it's kind of just been that, you know, there's a fire, East Cleveland needs help. We send them these two vehicles or vice versa. They want to be an active player in everything now. And that's good. That's good for everybody. So, yeah, training probably would be better than equipment. Yeah, training with your partners is always good. We try to do it at every opportunity. Unfortunately, as Battalion Chief Measures could attest, it's really difficult because of our run volume. You know, and our other daily needs, you know, the things have to get taken care of. Rigs have to get checked, equipment has to get checked out, daily duties. So, we, we're in a particularly difficult spot with training. We have the Wiley School, which University Heights Fire Department has practice gear and courses. And, you know, they'll set up these regional, well, not necessarily regional, Heights area trainings where Cleveland Heights, University Heights, Shaker Heights, South Euclid will come and occasionally other people too, and do joint training sessions. And we would dedicate people that would just not be there. Soon as they got there, they were back out on calls. So, we would try to black out a vehicle and then everything breaks- So we would try to black out a vehicle and then everything breaks loose in Cleveland Heights and they're right back out of there. Dedicating maybe some more to training would be the, that, those dollars would go the farthest. Yeah.
In order to do that, we've got to help you guys with that, that run volume and education on the other side too. So I'm seeing it, it like going hand in hand. So thank, thank you. This has been an eye opening for me. Thank you.
Mr. President. Mayor, the chief mentioned the first call program. And so I was really happy earlier this year to see that you partnered with other cities to bring that to Cleveland Heights. Could you share a bit of an update with us on how that's going?
Okay, yeah, sure. And I feel like I maybe gave some measure of an update just a little while ago. So we started in June. We're, you know, a little less than half a year in. Think the first maybe couple of months of of work, we were sort of still getting on our feet around that. But I think the the call numbers that have been addressed by first call personnel have increased since those first couple of months. What I can do is, I can, I don't have the data in front of me right now. And primarily, although they do partner primarily with police, they're also partnering with with fire EMS because of the the health aspect of things. But primarily when they go out, they're going out in collaboration with police. Think so early in the, in the process right now, I'm not sure how much we can, we can provide you some of the the types of calls that we've gotten. But I can, I can forward you some, some information and data. I'll forward it to all the council.
They're meticulous data collectors.
Yeah.
They have, you know, type of call, you know, what the, what services were provided, what the follow up and the outcome were, they're very good at that sort of stuff.
So it's early in the program, but so far, it seems like it's a positive and beneficial program.
Absolutely. I can, I can already see now opportunities for expansion of the program. I think, you know, doing this test is important to see how they can incorporate with the personnel we have here, how they work with the other resources that are in the area, like our mental health hospital around the corner. And, you know, how we can look at this in a long term way too. You were talking about sort of people who are repeated callers for services that maybe aren't necessarily emergency services. And having information collected by first call about that population of our residents means that there may be times when the social work professional can reach out to that person more proactively after certain calls and diminish the need for, for emergency services to respond to situations like that. But that's a longer term strategy of this program. And, you know, they may be making those connections right now, but I think we'll see it pay off in the future. But other, other expansions, I think it's possible that we need to take a look at the timing of availability for some of the personnel and expanding the number of people that are, that are working with us through this program. But we, we need to get through some substantial amount of time to see sort of how it's working in a, in a more long term and holistic way. But I, I will forward you and the, and the rest of council more information about the calls that they've gotten, some of the success stories that we've seen and, and, you know, that, that kind of thing. I'll let you know.
Chief, any other, you know, if you had a wish list of needs or capital requests that aren't on the list?
If, if the council sees fit and there are extra monies in the budget, we would really like to, if you can put some, make sure that there's some funding in Public Works to repair our back parking lot. We, I had reached out to Director Klink Scale in the, I think the spring or the summer to, to patch up our, we had some pretty bad craters back there. And she did get her folks out there pretty quickly and put a Band-Aid on the situation. And I had gotten back to her like a couple of weeks ago to just, to remind her about that. We do have a really bad need for windows. I don't know, I mean, that's been something that's been a problem for probably 15 years, at least 10. I don't know.
Just as a, as a clarification, this is likely to be addressed, right? Some of the leopardo work that we're putting in place next year.
As far as equipment, since we will have another fire prevention officer and we do have another really badly deteriorating station vehicle, if we could do two more passenger vehicles at the same cost, we, they were about the same, $64,000, if we could, that would be great.
Oh, yeah. Just to piggyback off of what you just asked, are those also hybrid explorers too that you guys are rolling with?
The last one we got is.
Okay.
We've moved that way. Assistant Chief Preuer's vehicle is a hybrid and he seems to like it a lot. And it, it has been efficient.
Okay.
I drove it to Iowa. To go to the ambulance manufacturer when we had to go, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else?
Three passenger vehicles. Oh, yes. The engine that we are replacing, the 2012 Rosenbauer, is starting to deteriorate. If we could have $300,000, we could refurbish that and for the first time probably in 20 years have a reserve apparatus, if there is excess funds for it. Battalion Chief Measures is confident that $300,000 would cover all of the, the problems that it has.
Can I ask a question about that? How much more life will we get out of if we did that, do you think?
If it's refurbished and in a reserve capacity, a lot.
Okay.
It wouldn't be a frontline vehicle anymore. So it would almost always be garaged, climate controlled, you know, and the reserve vehicles go into service when something is being serviced itself or repaired or when we go into storm mode, you know, we'll call in some extra personnel. Everybody knows that when there's a stiff wind, Cleveland Heights, you know, all the trees come down and the power lines and the, the folks that work out in the streets really, they crank it into high gear and what we need is people and apparatus and that would help with that.
Okay. My second question goes back to what Councilman Cobb asked about the, the two additional passenger vehicles. Do we have the same issue in terms of ordering those as we do with the police cruisers? Is it something we would have to get?
That hasn't been an issue, has it? The passenger vehicles ordering?
There's a delay in ordering and there's only a small window. So you have to forecast when the ordering window opens and if you don't have everything lined up, you don't have to.
Got it. And do you know if there's any availability right now? Is there something council should be doing right now? Have you seen anything that we need to snatch up or? Research it, okay. Oh, right, again, okay, just perfect, okay, thank you.
And how aggressive are we about trying to collect fees from our ambulance runs, particularly for people that have health insurance that's going to cover some of that?
So what we've always done is soft billing. We only bill for transports. We don't bill for, you know, show up unseen, talk somebody through something, take vital signs, you know, hey, do you want to go to the hospital? I suppose I could wait. Those don't get billed. Transports get billed, there's three types of billing. There's ALS 1, ALS 2, and BLS. And those are different rates. It's hard to extrapolate what the billing will be for a year in the future. I can tell you what it is. For last year, we billed 1,045,572 and change. That's before the processing fees. I want to say it was a few hundred thousand dollars that went into the account. It's about that every year. We do, like I said, soft billing. If someone can't pay their ambulance transport bill, they can petition the fire chief's office to absolve that. And I've only had two or three people actually do that. Some people just don't pay their bills and, you know, they'll, they'll send them a bill for the service if they don't pay. They're not going after them legally. I guess they understand that, you know, some people are in a really tough spot financially. What we've been discussing is possibly keeping with that soft billing, but hard billing non-residents. You know, people come into the city and call for the ambulance and get transported and they don't want to pay their bills, maybe, you know, because that would help the Cleveland Heights taxpayer, you know, assist in the whole process. Every dollar is important, right? I'm not really sure what else could be done about it.
Are we asking for health insurance information?
They do, yeah. Well, the ambulance personnel do not. When they get to the emergency room, they start their process with their social security numbers and stuff. Sometimes they'll, the social security number, the ambulance billing company will use that, you know, as an identifier and then bill from that. So we ask for the social security number. We don't ask if people are insured or not.
And then, I'm sorry, how much did we collect last year versus what was billed?
That would be in ambulance services line, or I'm sorry, the ambulance 606, 7304.
Might have to do some research on.
Okay. And we keep that in a dedicated fund?
Yes.
And then is, are those funds only used for the fire department?
Yes.
Okay.
Typically, that will be used to buy equipment, pay for trainings, apparatus. In the past, it hasn't been enough to, to be used for apparatus in a few years at least.
For the, for the new firefighter hires, the equipment that's going to be necessary to purchase for them, where is that built into the budget?
In numerous places. Director Schuster had increased the, the line for, what do we call that? It has the turnout gear, station and duty clothing and such. We had increased, obviously, they had to increase the, the fringe benefits for employees and such. It's in various different places, not all in one line.
Director Schuster, if we could, could we get the budget expense worksheets again for all of these departments? Because I think so far, we've just seen city councils.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Chief, you mentioned that there are several hundred thousand dollars in processing fees. Are those fees that we collect or fees that we pay?
So there, every city that bills, which is every city now, that bills for ambulance transports, they, there's two companies, I believe, we use one called Life Force Management. They're, they're both very similar. What they'll do is they do the processing of everything, they do the billing, they deal with the hospitals, you know, the information transfer and everything. They, they have a processing fee. We have a contract with them. We just signed it again sometime last year. And I did increase our billing rate. It hadn't been done in a long time. We were not anywhere close to comparable cities around us. That may or may not play out into how much comes back in, but there is a fee and I want to say, after it's all said and done, it's under 40%. We get about 60-ish back.
Is that just of what we collect? About 40% just of the money that we actually receive? Or do we still have to pay their services even if we don't collect anything?
No, we don't pay if we, if there's nothing.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, so do we have a consensus on the 300,000 for the refurbishing of that engine for the?
I may at least want to provide an opportunity for the finance director to opine a bit. I can, I can tell there's a bit of.
No, please.
So I just want to remind everybody that there is one pot of money for every single person. And the fire department with the union negotiations that just happened increased their personnel costs by 2.2 million dollars.
I see that.
So please increase their costs by over a million dollars. So that's already 3.2 million dollars. We also have a salary survey that the results aren't, they're in, but they're not quite ready to share yet, which is going to add additional increases. So I just would like to keep that in mind with everyone because our interest rates will start going down, right? We're not going to be collecting the interest once we start the ARPA stuff, the projects and the spending. So I like to keep in mind, we'd like to give everyone everything that they need and want, but there are other departments too, just to keep that in mind.
The, the finance director's advising caution, maybe?
Yes.
Maybe we could have some discussion about the.
Yeah.
I think once we get the figures from 2024 where we're under, you know, where, what was budgeted for, it'll be a little easier, I think, for us to, to, to move forward knowing what's been saved by, you know, personnel that weren't hired and just money not spent.
But if those positions in the future are going to be hired and then we have all these increased costs for the, the employees, like with the union contracts, with the salary survey also, we also have a union contract that is up next year that we will be negotiating also.
Yeah.
Just.
Fair enough.
I don't want to foreclose on the possibility of refurbishing this vehicle though, but I, the, the only caveat is that I'm thinking that it might be worthwhile to hold off on the conversation of adding that money to this capital budget until we have seen sort of where we land next year, especially with the, with the Labor's Local 860 contract negotiation.
Okay.
I think Addy, last year, did you not track our hearing discussions when we were talking about adding additional money? So perhaps this particular 300,000 could be highlighted as in abance or we're just keeping that until we get the final numbers? Would you, thank you.
All right, Chief, thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thanks to all for your time and dedication.
Thank you.
Since we're on track, do you want to take like a 10 minute break?
Yeah, we could do that.
So we don't get too far ahead.
Director Prosser, are you okay with that? Take just a short break and everybody on, I guess so. Okay, we're going to reconvene our budget process meeting. And now, next up, the IT Department Director Ryan Prosser.
Good afternoon. Good morning.
We're getting there. Would you like to make some opening remarks?
Yeah, so the majority of what we're doing in the IT Department that takes up the most time and the most funding resources from the city is related to cybersecurity, various software packages that all the departments use. And lately, a lot of it has been addressing surveillance disparities in the city. So we've been working to deploy a new camera surveillance network, doing a lot of work with FirstEnergy and some engineering firms to try and get coverage where we need it. New things for this year would be an entire encapsulation of Microsoft 365 with all of our users. Right now, we're just got like a pilot group of users on that. Also instituting multi-factor authentication for remote access, VPN, email, things of that nature. Actually, right, I had just been exchanging emails with Cyber Ohio for, applying for grant monies to address that piece for our cybersecurity. Other than that, we're just trying to keep with the trends and stay. and stakeholders.
Okay. Did you want to say a few words about the numbers?
For the 2025 budget request, the IT Department is requesting a million dollars, which is a decrease, but again with the capital. So they have a small increase in the personal services and that accounts for the COLA adjustment and healthcare cost increase. The other operating expenses is increasing by 48%, $137,000 difference. Do you want to explain?
Sure.
That is your outside maintenance?
Yeah, certainly. So the increase that will provide for us the resources we need to roll out Microsoft 365 to 400 users, as well as add cybersecurity training for city staff and provide a testing and feedback mechanism for things such as phishing attempts, spam emails, so we can have a more two-way engaged process on how we can all help in our cybersecurity efforts.
Before we get to everybody's questions, could you expand a little bit on your business district surveillance goal for 2025?
Yeah, so the goal is to complete the project that we began last year, which is to provide upgrades to and replacements for failing equipment or any blind spots that we have in our business districts where we have a lot of people shopping, traveling, eating, whatever, wherever there's a concentration of people in storefronts where there might be a need to have surveillance coverage. So we're working with FirstEnergy, GPD Group, and another engineering firm called Team Fishtail. FirstEnergy rolled out a new process in how we're allowed to attach to their poles in a new protocol. They outsourced some pieces of that engineering department that they have. So that's presented a little bit of challenge for us and some speed bumps, but we're working through those.
Does this include the parking garages in the business districts?
Correct. Yeah. So it includes a few cameras in the Coventry Garage. Cedar League Garage, we're doing perimeter. And then in the other spaces, we don't have coverage for all the lots and there's so many lots on, but I think that's something we wanted to talk about and think about.
Okay. Questions?
Director Prosser, you have a small team and so I'm very grateful for all the hard work that you're doing. So thank you so much for that. I love seeing the Microsoft 365 rollout. I think that that's critically important and I hope the council will fund that. And it's really great to hear about the training, like the phishing training exercises, that also is very important. So thank you for being mindful of that. We were just talking about the cameras. Do you have like a timeline for when that might be completed?
The problem I'm having with coming up with the completed date is the weather and our somewhat difficult time navigating the process with FirstEnergy. And because after we, after council had passed the legislation, approved the project, provided the funding, then FirstEnergy had this new initiative where they outsourced their engineering and they changed their protocols for how they allow us to attach to the telephone poles in our own city. So I, we're in the stages right now of working with that new engineering firm called Team Fishtail who have extensive experience in navigating FirstEnergy's new processes. And I haven't got numbers on how much the additional that may cost us and how long that would take, so I really don't have a good solid...
Do you have a gut feeling like 25, 26?
Yeah, my gut feeling is, and what I'm going to push for and strive for is to get it done this year, this coming year, 25.
Thank you.
I just, quick question, and thank you for helping me with the phishing stuff that I locate to confirm that I'm adequately and correctly judging that this should not be responded to. How do you define the noble business district in terms of covering it with cameras? Which, do you start with Mayfield and cover those businesses along there when you're looking at camera locations?
We, I can't remember exactly how we went through that process, but I know that we did put attention to making sure that there was an equitable distribution of cameras and surveillance and we weren't leaving areas that were well-traveled in the dark per se from cameras. And I think what we've done is we provided some flexibility and we made it sort of a dynamic process. So once the cameras go up and we're able to see what the footage is reflecting back to us, back to police, we're able to be a little bit nimble with that. And because we're getting, we're working on getting approvals to attach to nearly all the poles within the business districts, we can move cameras and change angles. And a lot of this equipment has multiple lenses, which can go 360 degrees in different angles and zoom in and out. So I think that's very much a living process in how we adapt the systems to each district.
Just had a question in terms of our contract management workflow, software, anything. Have we made any headway with that?
Yeah, right now I'm working with Andrea in the mayor's office to kind of do some demonstrations and vet what's out there. We just want to make sure that we're indesting and digesting as many different pieces as we can to make sure that, you know, we're not missing anything. So right now, we're at the stage of really discovering all that's out there, making sure we find some tools that maybe otherwise we wouldn't see or maybe some other cities aren't thinking about.
Let me ask a question that I think Councilman Posh would ask, which is, will we be able to use our computers and our.gov emails from out of the country?
Yeah, so that would be coming once our multi-factor authentication is rolled out, where you would put in your password and then another PIN or another process to authenticate yourself. So once that piece has stood up this year, then we'll be able to have access from out of the country. But right now, without that multi-factor authentication piece, we don't have a really strong demand from a lot of people that are connecting from outside the country at this time.
I understand that.
Yeah.
Any other questions? All right. Director Prosser, thank you so much.
Thank you, counsel.
Addie, do we have Director Thomas nearby? I know he's actually proximity-wise pretty close by.
Okay.
All right. And the walls are thin, huh? This is the first... All right, Director Thomas, welcome. Well, you were maybe 15 seconds late at the most. I think that's within the, anyway, feel free to make some opening remarks and then by all means we'll get Director...
Yeah, not on. Sorry about that. Thanks, Steve. Those are, those new staff members are Jessica Shantz, who is the new assistant director, and Francis Colato, who is our communication specialist, who's focusing on social media, but also has been doing as a contract worker, contractor prior to this, has been doing a lot of our graphic design. So she's, she's a twofer. We're getting, you know, two skill sets for one, one person. And Francis just started about a month ago. We, you know, we spend most of the year focusing, we have five main channels we use to communicate with the public and we're trying to develop some more. Those channels include the press video that we post, the city news, our email program, the website, and our social media activities. This year, just as a sort of a sample of some of the things that have gone on, we posted more than 8, 180 hours of video, many of which featured the city council. That's from 150 different meetings. We, we've expanded our email efforts. We've had a net increase of our list over the last year by about 4,500 people who have been participating in our email program. So our total is about, is close to 20,000 now, people that we email to on a weekly basis. We've, well, actually, we've increased our distribution of the city news from 12,000 to over almost 17,000. And last year, we've sent 116 mass emails, roughly one every three days, and we delivered almost 1.1 million individual emails to people over the last year. And the year's not over. We grew our average open rate by 2% to 57%, which is 15% above the industry average. And we've maintained click-through rates of 12%, which is twice the industry average. We published three focus magazines and we're in the process of, we finished, we completed the Department of Public Works refuse and recycling calendar at the beginning of last year or this year, and we are in the process of producing one for next year as well. We've, I mean, there are, there are many other things we've accomplished over this year and so I'd be happy to touch on them if you have specific questions.
The 2025 proposed budget is at 1.2 million dollars. As you can see, it is an increase for the personal services, increase for the assistant directors position. The other operating services increase because of increase in postage and printing cost.
Right. We anticipate doing, we did three issues of focus last year. We anticipate doing four this year. We've spent some time with the Parks and Recreation Department because one of the things, one of the issues that we had with focus this year was that, you know, a good portion of focus magazines devoted to the calendar for Parks and Rec, but the timing is often not exactly when they need to see those, that new calendar, when the people who use the community center need to see the calendar. So we have worked out a schedule with them for four this year, January, April, July, and October, as the times when they're making the change and when they're, the people who participate in the activities at the community center need to know what's going on. So we have an issue that is about to land next week, and the next one will come in January and then we'll be on this regular schedule. It's been, for the last month or so, it's been an all hands on deck kind of situation to try to get these out. But once we get them out, we'll have a process in place, a system in place to do it regularly. The addition of, and that's Jessica and Mark from my department, with the addition of, the addition of the fourth publication is the main reason the increase of cost on the programmatic side for next year. We need some additional money for printing and additional money for postage.
Just for clarification, do you, do you anticipate the April edition having the summer programs in it?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Go ahead.
My just comment was along those lines, just the feedback that I got from the public. So I absolutely appreciate that, the adjustment with that. It's been extremely helpful. I just shared with the public that those plans and those adjustments, I know it's difficult with that, that cycle, and so this is a great solution for that. Just wanted to appreciate that.
I think it'll be, make the focus much more useful to people in terms of their calendar. And that's what we're trying to get to.
All right. Questions? I think I see Petra sitting the button.
Thank you, Mr. President. Could we learn more about Kane Park and the operations over there? Looks like, according to the latest quarterly report, there's a deficit in that fund. So could we hear more about what's...
So there's a timing issue with the September. So we don't collect ticket revenue until after the event. So that came in October. And I'm sure during the recreation budget, we can...
We can, we can discuss that in more detail when we get to, Kane Park is in Parks and Recreation Department.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah.
I just saw Kane Park in here, so I thought that the...
We do promotion for Kane Park? That position is open at the moment?
We're evaluating...
How to do it?
The dedication to PR for Kane Park. And we discussed this a little bit yesterday, but we'll have more of that conversation when we talk about Parks and Recreation.
Yeah, please.
Thank you for coming.
Of course.
What events is your department involved in putting on?
Well, we're involved in almost all of them to one degree or the other because we handle the promotion for city events. The one that we are most closely involved with is the MLK event, which is coming up in January. We tend to, along, I mean, Mira helps with the physical part of it, but we work with the school district and the teachers to try to get the students involved. You know, we have other smaller events. Sometimes we have press events that we have to, we have to pay for. We often pay for staging. You know, we do that for the staging for, well, I believe now we purchased a stage for, I believe Parks has purchased a stage for, you know, do we use it?
The smaller.
Yeah, the smaller one. We had been renting that, so that's what that budget line item is for. We often don't spend all of it.
Who puts on the Juneteenth event?
That's Parks and Recreation.
Pride Day?
Also Parks. Yes.
Obviously Parks.
We do the promotion for those things.
And, you know, and I think of community relations, I think of it, the department is, is being more than, you know, city promotion and social media.
Pardon me.
Is there any thought, and maybe you're already doing this, to have, to have any more involvement in getting someone out into the community, making sure that there's always someone at, at community events? Are we doing anything to promote the notion of block clubs throughout the city, which used to be, I think, a function of the community relations department back in the day? So I, going forward, I would like to see more involvement by the community relations department in, in building a community and being involved in the community.
Well, I just, I can speak a bit to that. That's definitely in my plan for the evolution of community relations. We have been sort of strategizing and planning for more increased ability to have back and forth conversations instead of us just pushing information. In terms of sort of the economic efficiency of communications, the way that people live now is different than we did in the 90s, you know? And, you know, people are online a whole lot more, many people get their information from there. So we have to be there in order to provide information to people now. But that's not the only place people are. The pandemic maybe changed how we behave a little bit as well. And I know sort of building up to more in-person... someone at, at community events? Are we doing anything to promote the notion of block clubs throughout the city, which used to be, I think, a function of the Community Relations Department back in the day? So I, going forward, I would like to see more involvement by the Community Relations Department in, in building a community and being involved in the community.
Well, I just, I can speak a bit to that. That's definitely in my plan for the evolution of Community Relations. We have been sort of strategizing and planning for more increased ability to have back and forth conversations instead of us just pushing information. In terms of sort of the economic efficiency of communications, the way that people live now is different than we did in the 90s, you know, and, you know, people are online a whole lot more. Many people get their information from there. So we have to be there in order to provide information to people now. But that's not the only place people are. The pandemic maybe changed how we behave a little bit as well. And I know sort of building up to more in-person interaction and getting back to that, that kind of activity in the city is something that we've been trying to do for the past three years. That's the institution of the new, you know, larger events to try to get people to feel comfortable coming back together in community, to celebrate, or to think, or to interact, is part of that strategy as well. And we know, you know, the, the previous sort of iterations of this department included a lot more people. If you go even further back, you'll note that this department was actually the department that controlled Parks and Recreation as well. But, you know, moving, moving forward, we're trying to figure out exactly how many staff members we might need to more fully bring people in the community into conversation with us to see what is going on, what's happening, you know, what the city's doing, and also getting input. And I think that the communications team so far has been good at making that, you know, a bit more next level, to the degree that we've been able to by inviting people to provide input on things, setting up, even if you go back to the series of ARPA meetings that we put together, you know, going out into the community to have conversations, setting up, you know, opportunities to go talk about things like traffic around Noble Elementary, those sorts of things, having that community input and setting up those meetings, has been, I think, valuable as well, even with the, the small staff in Communications. But your, your point is well taken, that, you know, getting back to encouraging that smaller scale community building is going to be important moving forward. We've tried to collaborate a bit with Future Heights and their crowdsourced communication, crowdsourced conversations program. The most recent one, as you saw, was related to, to a big topic, Severance. But we've, we've had those sorts of interactions as well, and attempting to rely on and partner with that organization, because that program is really well done. We don't want to sort of try to recreate the wheel on that, but we do believe that it's important to start bringing back those block clubs and having a structure. We don't have any particular plans for next year to expand. We want to take this sort of a more, in a more gradual way, especially when it comes to increased personnel, just because the, the danger of, you know, falling into an economic downturn where we start ramping up in, in certain ways, and we may have to lay people off if we enter into another sort of 2008 situation. And we want to avoid that as much as possible. So we're trying to do this in a gradual way, but we do believe that there's a continued need for increased capacity to achieve exactly those goals that you're talking about, Councilman.
Thank you.
If, if I could add just a couple of things, Mayor. I would point out that, you know, in previous years, we have tried to do some tabling and going out in the community. That function has, to a very large degree, been taken over by the Mayor's Action Center, and they've been doing a bang-up job, in my opinion, getting out to people much more than we have the capacity for in our department. As the mayor pointed out, we used to be much larger, even after Parks and Rec was spun off on its own, into its own department. At one point, we had as many as 25 staff people. At the beginning of this year, we had four. And so we've been prioritizing one to, communication types that are one to many. And, you know, so those are the channels that we've been, because in trying to reach the most people with the capacity that we have. We've been trying to also find ways to open up new channels of communication that would enhance the participation in some of our public meetings. One of the thing, new things that we did this year was, we began a pilot program for robocalls to try to build the crowd for, first, it started for the Noble Corridor, the Noble Corridor Planning Project. And we believe that that, anecdotally, we didn't have a survey set up, but anecdotally, we believe it had an impact in getting more people to participate in those events. We've subsequently done that for, I believe we did it for one of the CARP meetings to see how that would work, and we think it, we think it's had an impact. But at the moment, what we've been staffing for is one-to-many communication.
Yes.
Morning, Director.
Morning.
I'm curious about the capital request for access Cleveland Heights software. Is that an upgrade? Will it change at all the interface we all see as users?
We've been working on upgrading it for the last year. The, I'd have to ask Steve about the specifics on what, what this money would be expended for. We typically ask for these numbers for software and for hardware. We don't often spend at all. But the hardware in particular is, you know, we have equipment that wears out, needs to be upgraded. We also have some things with the software that we have to maintain. I believe that this pays for some of that. It's not just the upgrade.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Director Thomas, you noted that the Mayor's Action Center has been at a lot of events. That's something that I've been very impressed by. I think that, you know, whether it's the Lee Road Candy Crawl or, or the Kane Park Arts Festival, I see them everywhere. I think that's really good. I also think that it's really good that we have like some swag that we're giving out at these events, because I feel like there are a lot of people who have a lot of pride in our city. So honestly, if we could increase that, if we could maybe have a store at the Rec Center or something where people could like purchase a t-shirt or a mug or something like that, I think that we might have did that like five or six years ago, because I think that I got some swag for my, my own self. But that might be something worth considering. I bet that there would be some folks who would be interested in that. And then also, on, on a different note, I am concerned about our city's long-term population and revenue outlook. I think that over the next 10 years, it's pretty likely with an aging population that we're going to have tremendous turnover in ownership of houses in our city. And so I think that it would be really great if we, if we were promoting our city so that if there were folks who were looking to move from like Parma, for example, to the East Side, so that Cleveland Heights is maybe one of the top five suburbs, something like that, that they're thinking of, that it's on their mind. And I think that we had like a campaign, maybe again, like five or six years ago. I feel like I remember in Tremont, there were some Cleveland Heights advertisements that I saw. And I think that it would be worth us considering something like that again, especially because I don't see other communities doing that. If everyone were doing it, it would be a wash if we did it as well. But if no one else is doing it, then that draws more attention to, to ours. So just wanted to put that out there. I think that it's something that might not cost us anything if, you know, we get some return from some people coming to our city, but just something for folks to think about.
Thank you, Council.
Mr. President, just on, on, along those lines, I did get a request, and I believe I talked to Jessica about this maybe a month or two ago, about people requesting if they could purchase full-sized Cleveland Heights flags to put on their flagpoles at their own houses. So just putting that out there.
And just to address the, the sort of the Cleveland Heights merch store idea, you know, recently, I visited the Cuyahoga Falls Nautatorium. They've got a, a community center, fitness center, you know, nautatorium complex that is really phenomenal. And I went there to take a look at how they do that work, how they, you know, engage with residents in that way. And it was, it was fascinating to see. And one of the things that they had was exactly what you're talking about. They had a sort of a section where, you know, people can buy merchandise related to the city and the nautatorium. And we're, we're definitely looking to increase that. We're also taking a look at using online store to allow people to purchase it online. I believe we've set up an account specifically for taking in those credit card payments, and are, are working to determine what types of merch we want to regularly have in stock, whether or not it's worthwhile to use merchandising company to fulfill some of those orders instead of keeping some of it in-house. So we're, we're definitely on board with that. We're working through some of those issues now. It'll involve communications, but it'll also likely involve, especially if we have a physical store at the community center, for instance, the Parks and Rec staff who would be maintaining that process over there. So thank you for bringing that up. It's definitely on our to-do. And when it comes to the Cleveland Heights flag, we're looking at that too. We've been, we've been looking, we've done a couple of prototype flags, looking at coloring and the material. We, we don't want to do it the wrong way, and have something that doesn't wind up looking beautiful for Cleveland Heights, but we're working on that. We've got one outside right now. I don't think that that'll be the final form, but we're working through it.
We did a test with one of the flag companies, and unfortunately, the material was too light, and as a result, you can see through it, and the, the image doesn't match up. You know, it's not symmetrical. So then it just looks like a mess. So we couldn't use them. And so, and it gets more expensive when you, when you start making sure the light doesn't show through. We also introduced a new swag item at the Mayor's State of the City. We have car magnets now, Cleveland Heights car magnets, round car magnets. So we have some in our office, so.
So just getting into your goals for 2025 a little bit, Director, I'd see, select and implement a digital asset management system for the city. Is that your recommendation, or where did that come from?
Yes. We, we absolutely need it. We're getting...
What's the cost of that?
Well, we're still pricing it out. And we've not proposed, we've not proposed it in this budget. There are places we might be able to take that from. Once we decide there, they scale differently. One that we, one company that we met with wants to charge us $20,000 a year. That seems, I mean, it's, it's great. They have an AI that will go through and tag your photos, you know, for you, so we don't have to put less staff to that, but it's too much, in our opinion. So we're trying to find a reasonable solution to this. We are, you know, our, our storage of images at this point is getting very unwieldy. It's becoming difficult to sort through and find the things that we want as quickly as we need them. So some form of digital asset management makes sense for the city. Also, we have a lot of video that's stored on our YouTube channel. We could also include that. And, and we have historic photos that have yet to be scanned, that we could also include into the digital asset management system. But the higher-end ones that are used by the company that, that we met with, those folks, I think, do like ABC and some of these other, you know, their product is for something that's larger than us.
I see.
So we're still getting a price for it.
So I bring it up every year, you know, you know, I'd love to see a welcome wagon. But kind of just related to that, Councilman Petrus is the Chair of the Housing Committee. He's got a piece of legislation that, if, if it goes through and would make it mandatory for landlords and tenants, I'm sorry, for property owners to give landlord tenant information to their tenants. What do you see as possible role for your department on, in that front?
Well, I defer to the mayor in terms of what we get assigned to do, but I could answer the question if you...
Certainly.
Okay. I, I see us playing a fairly significant role. You know, as we've discussed in previous meetings, my goal ultimately is to try to think through how to transform the way we communicate with new residents and potential residents. You know, that there is, you know, it's like a selling funnel, you know, when it comes to people choosing Cleveland Heights. And, you know, some of the things that we would be communicating to new residents need to be communicated to potential residents. Doing it the way we've done it in the past with a, with a large expenditure in print doesn't seem to match the moment, that much more is getting done online. So being able to take that online and take those things online, update them regularly, once they're digital, you know, our costs will begin to, to scale. I mean, because, you know, it's a one-time expense, you know, with some updating, as opposed to having to print it, print new documents every time. You know, there's some things that we've looked at preliminarily, because this is, you know, this has been a goal for a while, but it hasn't been one we've had the capacity to take on yet. You know, there are some really intriguing ways to potentially market Cleveland Heights, especially with the, with all the development of new housing that's been coming online. You know, it is, you know, most of the time, people are looking at simply their housing costs, but there's some evidence that incorporating travel costs, you know, the transportation costs, that Cleveland Heights is a far better deal than people realize. And that there, there's a way to, you know, there is potentially a way to come up with new forms of marketing that emphasize that. And we'd like to be involved and I think it makes sense.
Absolutely. And I'm glad you're thinking, you know, of being outside Cleveland Heights to do that. I, you know, I just think the landlord-tenant topic opens up an opportunity to, you know, obviously welcome tenants, people, you know, 41% of renters in Cleveland Heights. And, you know, certainly voter registration materials, people often even registered voters, you know, they, they rent somewhere else, they move somewhere else, forget to re-register or regi, not re-register, but register their new address. You know, a magnet with the Mayor's Action Center and all the various phone numbers and so forth would be a nice welcoming gift as well. I had, oh, what do we do, and is there a budget for welcoming new business owners? Do we, does your department do some kind of communication with new businesses that locate here?
We don't, but Economic Development, the Economic Development Division of, I'm going to mess up the full name.
Landings, Neighborhoods and Development.
Thank you. They started a few months ago doing a monthly newsletter that focuses, I believe they've been welcoming new businesses that way. We don't, I'm not, we don't do anything else other than trying to get them onto our list for the City News and other types of things. We've been stepping up what we've been doing in Focus. You'll see in the one that's going to hit next week that we have a holiday gift guide that focuses on many new businesses that have started over the last year. That wasn't the only criterion that we used, but including things, because the city's too big a place to get everybody in there. But a lot of them are relatively new. So we're hoping to use Focus like that in the future as well.
Mr. President?
The Economic Development Division is relatively high-touch when it comes to their interaction with new businesses and welcoming new businesses. And, you know, they, they get to know the business owners. They're, they're having conversations with the business owners. And the, the consolidation of these different divisions into one consolidated, integrated department has been helpful as well, because, you know, if you're opening a new business, you've got to have certain licenses. You, if you're doing a build-out of, you know, a commercial space, you got to get the permits to do the work. And the connection between building and permitting and planning and, you know, doing all of the work that you need to do to make, go through the, the board, you know, approval process, works with planning and economic development are all in that conversation. I had a conversation with business owners, opened up a, a space here at Severance. It's a pretty phenomenal space. They, they've converted some space into multiple locations for different types of service providers, whether it is some, I think a tattoo artist is, is locating there. They've got people who, you know, do hairdresser work or nail, you know, work as well in this large space that, that brings in a whole bunch of different new businesses. And having a conversation with them yesterday, they, you know, filled me in on how much interaction they had with the city in getting this place up and running, and working with not only, you know, building and permitting, but also our fire inspector and economic development in particular, in a very sort of close way over time. So it's a, it's a, that's a high-touch kind of communication strategy that we have with economic development and new businesses. Some businesses need... Some businesses need less when it comes to support and assistance from the city and sort of navigating certain processes. So it's a case-by-case when it comes to different businesses and how they want to interact with the city. I know this is a little bit off-topic from, you know, the budget, but did, can you remind me if I, I went to a First Suburbs meeting last month. Did I communicate to you the, there was a presentation about recruiting new businesses and so forth from an outfit there? I mean, I'm just bringing this up. Did this ring a bell?
Uh, no.
Okay, so that's something I need to send to you. This was, Georgie Wheelow was there and a couple other mayors, and they had used this service, and it talked about a lot of things you were just talking about. So I'm going to make a mental note of that. Did you have a?
Just in support of what they both just stated, it has made a tremendous difference in terms of the businesses having a point of contact and drive that information coming from economic development. And all of the conversations I've had with businesses in terms of what their communication is, it's made a tremendous difference because they're able to reach out and navigate through the entire city through that way. And so if the public is wondering, well, it's a little strange to have that connection, it's because those businesses are able to get a ton of questions answered and get through those approval processes much quicker, as well as get informed on other things that are happening in the city. And I can absolutely tell that communications is coordinating that with them, because they're, some of the businesses I'm meeting with, it's clear that not only they know what's available for their business, but they know what else is happening in the community. So I just want to tell the entire administration, you guys have done an exceptional job with that, because even two years ago in this city, businesses were having a difficult time trying to figure out a point of contact to navigate through everything. But now being able to come in and open up and have that central point of contact that will help feed in and engage them in those other departments has made a tremendous difference as well, and something that I think we should all be promoting in terms of that hand-holding as these businesses come in. But it's a great, great, great thing that you guys are doing, so thank you.
Thank you.
Director Thomas, can you remind me what the, you said it already, but what was the open position?
We have two, but one of them is the Kane Park position. That's still under discussion. What to do with it? The other is, it's a position that you, that we asked Council to fund last year, a community relations coordinator, who essentially is, our goal is to have that person be sort of an expediter. We have a lot of programs going on now, a number of contracts that we're managing, and to have somebody who would help us with that would be, you know, extremely important. We spent a lot of the year filling the Assistant Director position and the one, and the Communications Coordinator position for social media and graphics, and now that they're finished, you know, I'd like to be able to fill the Community Relations Coordinator position.
So Director Schuster, is this, is this evident in the budget? I mean, are these two positions budgeted for? Okay. Other questions? Director, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. So this is gonna, right, we're at the end, I think? Everybody's hungry, or certainly I am. Could you, Eddie, if you don't mind, just what's up tomorrow? Sorry, I should have given you a heads up on that.
Tomorrow, we have Parks and Recreation, Public Works, and Planning Department.
Okay. And again, that starts at 10:00 AM. Anything else? All right, Mayor, Director Schuster, and Director Thomas, thank you. This meeting is adjourned.